Good afternoon, everyone. It is Wednesday, April 4, 2018. Before we begin our council meeting, I invite you to please stand if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're not laughing at me. I just love your glasses, yes. Just like a different person. Okay, thank you and good afternoon again. Ange, may I please have a roll call?
Brad Hent.
Here.
Sean Bruiser.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Greg Gills.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
Thank you. You'll notice we have a little change. The first item from now on on our agenda will be the approval of the agenda set forth. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda that is set before us today?
I'll move that. Support.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call, please?
Bruiser.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Thank you. Second on our agenda is public comments. At this time, are there any public comments? I invite you to come on up. Share your name with us and your public comments.
Bob Engel. And the only thing I have right now is a question. And the question would be, would it be possible to have the Pavilion listed as a specific item in the financial report that is reported in the paper? As is the airport, the library, the park, the museum, and then to show the income and receipts as this report is printed up in the paper? That is all I have, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Is that possible to do?
Is that possible? I-
Anything's possible. Yes, it is.
I would say yes, but I don't get to do that. Okay, so Ange will look into getting that then taken care of. Thank you very much, Ange. Anything's possible with please and thank you, right? Thanks for bringing that up, Bob. We appreciate that. And thank you, Ange. Are there any other public comments? We'll move on to number three, the consent agenda. A couple of things I'd like to point out before we take any action. Under the letter F, the consideration of approval of a new liquor license for El Taco Mexican Restaurant. That is pending the DRAM insurance. We have heard from their insurance provider, which is Dan Mattis, and he said he should have that within the next day or two. So upon approval with that, I would like to add pending their DRAM insurance. And then in consideration of approval of the EMA Director resignation, Walt Pruxma has given us many years as the Director, and we thank him. And with that resignation, we would have Kent Lorenz step in as Director and Mike Davis as Deputy Director. With that said, are there any questions regarding the items underneath the consent agenda? And if not, we would need a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments, questions? May I have a roll call, please?
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Bruiser.
Aye.
Thank you. Going into new business now, also, I just thought of this. It was pointed out to me just recently that our microphones are not picking up very well here. Out there they are, but here they're not. So if everybody could just make a little extra effort on talking into the mic, I'd appreciate that. Just a heads up. It's just our system, but thanks to the public for letting us know. I don't always watch the videos. So our public hearing is now open, and this is regarding the consideration of resolution ratifying and approving sale of real estate in the Sunshine Edition. This is something that we've already had a public hearing on back in July of 2015 where the owners Jeff and Sarah Van Matrin took possession. And we need to clarify some paperwork as they're selling said property. Am I correct?
You are correct. They're, consistent with our regular procedure, there was a hearing on the conditions of the sale of Lot 10. And as long as potential buyers met those qualifications, the sale would be approved. The unique circumstance with this lot is that Lot 10 was sold to somebody else, and for various reasons, it ended up back in the city's possession. And then later on, was conveyed to the Van Matrins, subject to the previously approved terms and conditions. A title examiner has suggested that that somehow undid or necessitated additional public hearings, so to make sure that that issue is resolved, the agreed course of action was to have yet another public hearing.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So at this moment, the public hearing is open. Are there any public comments or comments that need to be shared? Other than the explanation, thank you. And if there are none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make the motion to close public hearing.
Support.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please, to close the public hearing?
Bruiser.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Thank you. And then we would need a motion to approve this resolution ratifying and approving sale of real estate in the Sunshine Edition. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call, please?
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Bruiser.
Aye.
Thank you. Number five on the agenda is the consideration of approval of an engagement agreement on the sewer revenue loan notes. This is, the City of Sheldon will be hiring Allers &amp; Cooney in its capacity as bond counsel to the City of Sheldon in regards to the issuance of the sewer revenue capital loan note, Series 2018. Do you have questions on the specifics of that agreement? This is us hiring Allers &amp; Cooney. If there are no questions, comments, we would need a motion to approve the engagement with Allers &amp; Cooney, and I believe the amount, the flat fee, is $11,600.
So moved.
Thank you, Pete.
Support.
Thank you, Tom. No discussion? I would like a roll call, please.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Bruiser.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Number six on our agenda is, we will now open the public hearing, and this is regarding the not to exceed $8,500,000 in sewer revenue capital loan notes. Public hearing is open, and at this time, public comments are welcome, if there are There's a lot of paperwork and steps we have to go through with this whole sewer rewater, wastewater treatment. So it seems like we've done this many times. It's just another step and process that we go through. So there are no public comments. May I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. And a roll call to close.
Eggers.
Aye.
Bruiser.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Then continuing under number six, authorization of a loan note agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation. In layman's terms, Sean, would you be able to explain that?
So essentially, you're going through, this is providing all of the documentation needed, all of the public notice in order to borrow the sewer revenue bonds to complete the construction of the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. I like layman's terms himself. Do we have a motion, then, to approve the authorization of the loan agreement and the issuance of the notes to evidence the obligation?
So moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. There's been no discussion, so I would like a roll call, please.
Gills.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Bruiser.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
And then the second underneath Ia. number six is by resolution, instituting the proceedings to take additional action. This is by resolution. Resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $8,500,000 sewer revenue capital loan notes.
And this is just memorializing the activity of the city council.
Thank you. So do we have a motion to approve by resolution?
So moved. Support.
Thank you, Ange. And a roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Bruiser.
Aye.
Okay. Number seven on the agenda is consider approval of contract on the 2018 Floyd Industrial Park Improvement Project. As you'll recall, we've already awarded the bid. Now, this is approval of the contract by resolution. And that was not our meeting passed, but the meeting prior, or was it our last meeting? Please go by so fast. That we awarded the-
I believe it was March 8.
I think so. Two meetings ago. So now, this is by resolution approving the contract with Vanderpoel Excavating for the 2018 Floyd Industrial Park Project. Any specifics we need to point out?
It's also approval of the bonds, which our clerk has confirmed have been filed.
Thank you. Questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the contract with Vanderpoel Excavating?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call, please?
Hamel.
Aye.
Bruiser.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Thank you. And number eight on our agenda is now the consideration of approval of contract on the wastewater treatment facility project, again, similar as our last item. We've already awarded the bid. Now, this is approving the contract by resolution. Excuse me, and this is with Hogon Construction for the 2018 wastewater treatment facility improvements project.
And what was the dollar amount on that? Because I don't see that contract in our packet.
The dollar amount was $9,536,9700. The construction estimate for the project was $9,739,000.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yep.
And the contractor has signed?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, then do we have a motion to approve by resolution the contract with Hogon Construction regarding the 2018 water treatment facility improvements project?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any last questions? I have a roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Bruiser.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Number nine on our agenda is we have a partial pay estimate, and this is in regards to the airport snow removal equipment. Pay estimate number one is in the amount of $173,193.
Is that equipment here?
Yes, it is.
Not to be sent back?
It was reviewed and approved by our engineer of record. The item that is not present would be the four-by-four carrier truck, plow truck, as well as the steel box on the back. That is, the actual carrier is being remanufactured.
Okay.
Nope. These are for the items that we have on hand at the airport.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification, the answer to the question. Any other questions in regarding the pay estimate?
The, I'm questioning, it shows original days as 180. We've used 184.
We have liquid damages in the amount of $250 a day.
It's no wonder.
So it's still under the original contract, so the city would be able to seek out those liquid damages. So we do have a truck that was supplied by Fox International to remove snow in the event of a, in the event of a snowfall, to, as in yesterday, to help, help in that situation because we are without a vehicle right now. But we do have the liquid damages in effect that will help compel them to provide us a truck, per contract.
Because this contract is to February 21, so is that, was it 184 at that point?
It extends.
Okay.
But as always, Greg, liquid damages are only as good as what you can approve while Oscar Financial provides to the city. So don't just assume that we're deducting due knowledge data of the contract.
Mm-hmm.
Because we wouldn't win that battle.
Case in point, yesterday, we had a snowfall, so that would be a possibility to-
No, because as Sean mentioned, they provided us with a vehicle.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
So-
So it doesn't mean we're going to-
Doesn't mean much.
But there is that-
But that's compelling them to move forward and expedite the manufacture of a new vehicle and to provide a truck.
And it's also a reason why they provided us with a vehicle.
Right, yep.
Because then we could show.
Mm-hmm.
So they're aware of the provision, and they're taking steps to mitigate.
Yes.
Fair enough.
Any other questions, then, regarding the partial pay estimate? If not, then do we have a motion to approve partial payment number one for $173,193?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, a roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Bruiser.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Thank you. Number 10 on our agenda, we have brought back the consideration of adding a second full-time employee at the Crossroads Pavilion. Last time we had met, I had asked, and I thank you for obliging my request to wait as there was some further information that I personally wanted to pursue. And though I've held up the Crossroads Pavilion in their pursuit of finding employment, whether it's part-time or full-time, my hope is that we were able to get whatever we needed so that we can go forward with the discussion on where we will go with that determination. And there's some discussion, I think, that we need to continue to have as far as a council, so we have clarity with the Pavilion Board as far as where we want to go with the Pavilion. Do we want it to grow? Do we want it to maintain? I have been satisfied in some of the talks and answers and discussions I have had, and I'm not sure, Council, where you're at with the discussions and questions and suggestions and comments that have come up before our last meeting and within the past two weeks. I'm not sure if that's a discussion we want to have right now, today, if that's something that we can decide upon. I don't get to vote, but I can make a recommendation. But I'm curious as to where we might stand now as council, if there's any other questions that may have come up in the past two weeks. I did ask Kevin to be a part of the meeting this time to answer any questions that the council may have. Brittany is here as well, if we have any questions that we were not able to get answered, or if there's a discussion we want to have openly now or at a later time. Any comments that would like to be shared?
I would like to speak to the issue, but must we put it on the table first by an motion? A point-of-order question, I guess. Or can we just, can I just dive in?
I think we can have a discussion. I mean, our agenda says the consideration of adding, I mean, a discussion is always welcome at the table.
Okay.
So, go ahead, Greg. What would you like to share? Dive in.
I've had a couple of conversations this week that have me questioning where we're going with this. And then I came across a quote today about vision that says, "Never limit your vision based on your current resources," attributed to Michael Hyatt, who's a motivational speaker and a publisher, former publisher, and so on. And I've been thinking about that in light of the conversations I've had this week, and I feel that my vision is limited, number one, because I'm looking at our current resources, thinking that is, may limit it. But number two, I really don't know what the vision is. I know what my vision is, but I don't know collectively between us as a council and the board of the Pavilion what that vision is. Are we all on the same page? Is this going to be a two-day-a-week facility, weekends primarily, or do we want it to be four or five days in a week's time? What's it going to take? If that is the case, what's it going to take to get us there? And so, at this point, I would like to see us, I don't know that this is the venue to do that, but have a sit-down discussion called an open forum, a workshop, I mean, we'll call it what we will, similar to what we do with our budget planning, that we have that discussion, those key players at the table. We can sit down and have a back-and-forth discussion, pros, cons, process, all of that, and get it all there out on the table, rather than doing here in this setting. And so I would propose that we table it until such time, whether that's a noon meeting on Fifth Wednesday. I mean, do we use that kind of as even a trial or a dry run for other issues where we have more questions and answers throughout the course of the year?
Right. And I'm all for that as well. It's, one thing I do not want to do is hold up the Crossroads Pavilion with being lack of staff. And I have let the General Manager, Brittany, know that due to this delay that I imposed two weeks ago, if there's something that comes up and you need help, please let me be the number-one person that you call, because I'm holding that back of whether we fill that part-time or full-time position. But I agree, there were questions that had come up to me from staff, from council, and it happened the Tuesday and the Wednesday before our council meeting, and that was why there was things I wanted to pursue. And I am welcome, I welcome that opportunity for us to all sit down together in an open meeting so that we can all discuss together instead of individually and come up to what could be the best solution. The only thing that I worry about is how soon. I do think time is of the essence, but yet it's not, because we'll make the best decision if you can just give us a little patience. So I'm wondering if that's a workshop or an open forum that we do have, how soon would we be willing and able to come together and sit together with members from the Crossroads Pavilion Board, with the General Manager, Brittany, and council, so that we can all talk together?
I'd like to hope that we could do that fairly soon.
I'm certainly committed, and I think the rest of the council's committed towards doing that, because I think, in the end, we all have the same vision of success for the Pavilion and for the management of that. But I do believe, just through my conversations as well over the past few days, that because we don't, we aren't all clear on that, we could be looking at different options of getting there that don't necessarily benefit the overall direction. And I think with, by being able to get together and collaborate, as Greg has outlined and you spoke to, I think we have the opportunity, not only as a council, but also as the board for the Pavilion, as well as the management of the Pavilion, and for the, you know, the citizens of Sheldon, to have an opportunity to partake in that conversation, that vision. And with a shared vision, then we'll make the right decision, and it will be a success. So I agree, if we could have the blessings of the Pavilion Board to give us a little time to maybe go through that procedure, I think we'll, I think as a council and as city management, we'll be able to best support that effort, so.
That's still three weeks out. I think they need to move on their employment. I think they need to start, whether it's looking at part-time first and then converting that after we have our meeting to a full-time, I think they need to get their wheels turned. And if they're in need of help, then, way I hear, then I think they need to move forward on their part-time people. And if we decide to go full-time, then they can change their direction after three weeks. You know, but I still think they need to look at, start the process for their part-time help and get that going, because otherwise it's going to be, you're just going to prolong their decision-making on the next employee.
I guess the only other thing I would like to say is that from initial meetings of conceiving that building, we designed it the way it's designed to be much more than a wedding venue. That was the mission from day one. So as far as sense of direction, that's a major change in direction if we're only going to use it for a wedding venue, because we would have designed the building differently if that was the goal. We don't need that big a facility to just do weddings. So clarification.
Any other comments? Sometimes when I look at, when I look to my left and right and I see, I can't quite tell if you're going to have a comment yet, and I don't ever want to interrupt, a question that I might have for the Crossroads Pavilion Board, Brittany or Kevin, would it be feasible to run an ad without stating if it's part-time or full-time until we have, let's say we move along and then determine whether it's full-time or part-time so that resumes can at least be accepted without stating? That, I don't know. I'm not sure what kind of effect that'll have or not have.
I guess my opinion, it's a tricky thing.
Yep, I'm sorry, Kevin. I'm so sorry. Would you mind coming up to the podium, because it has to be recorded, your, my voice? Thank you, sorry.
Sure. So, I think it's a very large question that has to be answered because I think the quality and the quantity of people applying for the job are going to be completely different if you have benefits versus not.
You're right.
Full-time versus not. It's a completely, it's a major change, and so I think it just needs to be decided before we put an ad out myself. That's just my personal opinion.
Sure. And that's, I just wanted to quick ask that, just to see where you all might stand with that.
So if we were to talk about a possible date in the future to do this, how much time do we have legally to, how much notice do we have to give the public on?
You would give the same notice you give for your other public meetings, which usually 24 hours.
24-hour notice. And I know the Crossroads Pavilion Board meets again on-
And they are public meetings, and we have-
Wednesday.
We meet every month.
Yep. They meet Wednesday, April 11, at 6:00 PM, next, a week from today. If that's a discussion that could be had with the full board, I don't know if it would need to be or not. It's another week of putting things, you know, back, or is it something that we, see if it's doable sooner? I don't know.
I would like to meet, propose, just to get something out there, that we meet 7:00 next week, Wednesday morning, 7:00 AM, like we do with our budget meetings. Just schedule for an hour, but become prepared to discuss and see what falls out.
I think also when we all sit down together and chat, other opportunities, ideas, and suggestions come up, just one-on-one with each other, so I'm interested to see where we all might clear that out now. Are you completely opposed with waiting one more week for a decision to be made? Putting you on the spot, General Manager Berensen.
I think waiting another week, if we have more time to think about it, I mean, we can do it if the outcome, we just want the best outcome.
Okay.
So I think a week would be all right.
Okay. Someone's going to join us. Any other comments? Then I'm not opposed to tabling. I got to get my book. Do we motion a table, or do we just no action?
Well, there's no motion on it. There's no motion pending.
Thank you.
But I believe we follow the rules of Robert's Rules of Order, and it is in by code, so it would have to be by motion.
If we table something.
If you table it, and you have to specify what day, reading in Robert's Rules of Order, that's what I found out.
So if we table it, then it has to be by motion. And the table would be by motion of specifying April 11 is when we bring it back to the table for final discussion.
I will make that motion, that we table this soon, pending a meeting Wednesday.
April 11, 2018. April eleven, two thousand eighteen.
Seven o'clock A.M.
Seven A.M. In council chambers.
Council chambers and at least Brittany and Kevin present. If the whole board is there, fine too.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any last comments?
Is this a council meeting or is it a workshop?
A workshop.
So at a workshop, if I'm correct, we can't take action at a workshop?
Yeah.
Well, I think you, you can characterize it as a meeting because you're gonna provide notice, and there's gonna be an agenda.
And there'll be a qualm, and there's an agenda. So yes, we can't take action.
Okay, I didn't know if it's considered a workshop, if it's different than a council meeting.
I think you would, you would adjourn out, but then you can, and then reconvene it into a, a city council meeting.
Okay. So workshop, convene, come back with the one item on the agenda, come out.
So you can do that at same, same time.
Okay.
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 Thanks for that question. Any other questions? All right, then, may I have a roll call, please? Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Kevin, Brittany, for being here. We'll be meeting again. Next on our agenda is the consideration of the second reading of the ordinance regarding the sewer rates. With this being our second reading, we would need a motion to go to the third and final reading, which is what I will recommend that we do. There are times where we can, why do I always forget the word when I want to skip over a reading? Wave? Wave it, thank you. I can never remember wave. We can usually wave and move on to final approval, but with this, I have not had any comments regarding these next set of sewer rate increases, but I do recommend, Council, that we approve the second and move it to a third. To give the public time to give us any feedback or comment.
Can, can, Sean, can you refresh when we, uh, announced the difference in the rates from what we initially thought they were going to be? There was a percentage?
Yes, we're, we're looking at going down. The, the original rate study had us going up, um, a total of ninety-eight percent. We are now looking at a total rate increase, uh, from June, or excuse me, January of, of two thousand and eighteen through January of two thousand and twenty of ninety-four percent. So it, it, it's been reduced by four percent overall.
And that was based upon the fact that we got favorable...
Bits.
Bits, so. So if we waited and go another reading, maybe it'll go down again, maybe, then?
Can always hope.
I like your positive thinking.
Yeah. It's not real logical, but it's positive.
That's it. Thank you for the question. Are there any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the second reading to move to a third?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. And if there's no further comments, may I have a roll call, please? Kent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Last on our agenda is comments. Anything, Todd? Somebody remind Mother Nature it's spring. By all anything? No, okay, thank you. Kurt?
Just briefly, um, just wanted to bring awareness to our second annual O'Brian County Career Day is coming up on April twenty. Uh, for those who may be unaware of what O'Brian County Career Day is, it's a workforce initiative that we started last year. Uh, we partnered with Northwest Iowa Community College, O'Brian County Economic Development, and Iowa State University, and some of our larger employers in O'Brian County, where we take all of our high school sophomores, um, from O'Brian County. And Sibley-O'Chee and Community School District is joining us this year too. We get them into our businesses, uh, provide tours with them, or to them, we bring it up, a speaker over lunch hour. So it's a full-day activity, um, for our high school sophomores here in O'Brian County. So it's a workforce-driven initiative. Um, April twenty is our second annual event, so I just wanted to bring exposure to that too, so.
Wonderful.
Yep, and if anybody has any questions, I certainly can answer those.
All right, thank you. Council to my left?
Um, I've had a few, um, concerns, um, over the last few weeks about the old Can Redemption Building, where that is falling on our nuisance list. It's been that way for a couple of years, and I think we need to move that along, because it's not gonna change.
Yep, as, as one of the goals that the city council has set was to aggressively seek out funding to deal with, with some of the, um, dangerous buildings that we have in the city. So that is one of the, um, one of the areas where through legal fees and, and those costs, um, it falls into the next budget beginning in, in January. What I can tell you is we have started taking action on the thermal cell building.
Okay, but I want to know what...
That's going through the con, condensation process.
What the process, where we're at on that building? Because it's been a long time since that, a couple of years since the fire, and I know it's been brought up before. Where's the nuisance process? K and J cycle, the old Can Redemption. No, the burned-out on Highway eighteen.
Right. And they, so budget, you mean July one?
So...
July one.
So right now...
Have we done any nuisance process on that building? To have them clean it up?
Nothing that we're aware on your...
I, I stated what, what the action plan is going...
I think we need to move that forward because it's been a few years since that's burned down. Have we sent letters? Have we done any of that?
We're attempting to identify the property owners.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Greg. Sean, repeat, any comments?
Nope.
Tom or Greg?
None for me.
I just want to publicly recognize, thank Walt Freutzmann for his role as the EMA Director. He's stepping down after several years, but, um, just appreciate his input there and the hour, volunteer hours that he has put in over these many years, so, thank you, Walt.
Sean, did you have notes, anything?
You covered it.
Oh, all right, I do as well. I took notes. Echo the Walt Freutzmann, wonderful, hopefully he'll still be a part of EMA, but we appreciate his service and volunteering to be the director, and hopefully he'll still find his part in the EMA. Uh, also, it is April, parking is allowed on the streets, even though we still have snow sometimes. If it does snow, just please move in there, that'd be great. But with that said, in April, the, as of April second, the flags went on sale for Community Cleanup Day. And that takes place in May, and I have that on my phone. It's on our website, sheldoniowa.com. It's at the bottom of the main page regarding spring cleanup. Flags are on sale at the city office, they're fifteen dollars. If you need more information, again, visit sheldoniowa.com.
Just to clarify, West Side actually starts April thirty.
April thirty is their flags?
Is when the, the pickup starts.
Pickup, yeah.
Yes.
These are, flags are available.
Yes.
And when you buy your flag, you get the instructions on when pickup is, what is permissible, what is not, et cetera. Before we do community cleanup, there is garage sales. The reason I say this is you have opportunity to sell your things, place things in the refuse by buying a flag for community cleanup, because after that, after spring, we do begin our nuisance tours again, driving around town and just making sure we're keeping things neat and tidy. Any questions regarding the flags for Sheldon Cleanup? Again, visit the website, or you can call the city office. Tomorrow is Ladies' Day Out and Ladies' Night Out, so if you are a downtown merchant, be prepared, there will be many cars in the parking and many shoppers hopefully. And last, um, I have scheduled a coffee with the SEDC. The City of Sheldon will be hosting a SEDC coffee on Friday, May eleven, and we will hold that on the lower level here at the community building. We haven't done that in years. Greg, you brought that up a long time ago, we've done it once, and I look forward to doing that again and keeping that something common, uh, where people can come out and pick our brain. That would be Bob. And also, uh, Council, if ever other ideas come up, uh, where we're involved with public things, just keep me posted. It's been a while since I've kissed a pig, Greg, so I don't know why we did that, but that was fun too. So, remember that? Anyway, thank you all for the discussions today. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Great, thank you. And our roll call, please? Eggers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.